You know, and let me see if I can, I'll try to get this on YouTube because I've had a lot of people wine, or not wine, but say, how come you don't have it on YouTube anymore? Well, the rate, the most, the main reason I don't have it is because I'm, I'm just oblivious and I forget. There's no real reason. But anyway, I'm signing that on. Okay. As soon as it gets on, I have to get off. There we go. Yes. Okay. There we go. Okay. Now, all right, well, this is going to be a very interesting session. Because I don't know, we'll just go through it and because I think it's going to be, I mean, it was, it was illuminating to me, you know, and I'd read a lot of these things in the red book, but I really hadn't understood them before. But this first one is on 1220. And in a lot of these things, we need to look and say, who are we talking about here? Who he is he talking about here? And let's just go through it. And so it's 122013. There's, and he's just talking now, this whole thing, and, and I think this is kind of let the secret out of the bag. He's talking about his visions and the fact that he's been introduced to the visionary world. He realizes that it is real and it's autonomous and it's not him. And he did not know that before. And so now he is very grateful and he's trying to describe his emotions. Okay. So anyway, there, he starts it out like this. There are many uncertainties that main one is, should I keep this new life and world? This new world is weak and artificial. Well, yeah, I mean, it's not, you know, somebody hitting us on the head with a hammer, but wait, wait till you hear what he sees, says more about it. Artificial is a bad word, but I've learned that weak, artificial beginnings. And I love this term, the unsightly put together semi unrealities. How do you like that? Kind of describes the hypnagogic state. The unsightly put together semi unrealities can develop into horrible realities. Now, I think what he's talking here is his fear of going insane, you know, that he's going insane. And, you know, Elijah will mention this later when he thinks that he has megalomania. And that's why he's resisting it, you know, that he might get megalomania or, you know, some type of a, he knew people at Burgolzy who had Christ complexes and things like that, you know? So it could develop into a horrible, these mustard seeds that grow into a tree. A word conceived in the womb of the poor version becomes a god with a 2,000 year old history. So in other words, what's going to become of me with all these visions that I'm having? So then he starts to talk about, and, and, and let me just read the last line because I think it's going to put everything else in context. This is the last paragraph. My soul, you wanted me to write down and utter all these words. I did not know that you guarded such secrets. I am astonished. You are an unbelievable riddle. Okay. Now he's talking about these things he's experienced in since October 27th, I think. You know, and now it's December 20th, and this is maybe like the 13th or 14th entry. Anyway, I have received your sprout. You are who you who are to come. I have received your sprout. I have received the first bud that came up above the earth from your root. I've seen it. So I, I don't know how it's going to affect me yet, but I've received it. And who sent it? You who are to come, you know? I have received this sprout in deepest need and loveliness. I mean, he's in a deep depression. Everything that he's here talking about is intensely personal. There's nothing generalized about this. I covered this sprout, these first visions in shabby patchwork. And I bedded this sprout down on my words of straw. And the mockers in me grinningly worshiped the sprout. In other words, he's reeling and, you know, he's, 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 he's enchanted by them, but he's not sure what they are. The sprout is the child of you who are to come. Your child, your odd wondrous child, the child of the one who is to come. The child who will announce the father. Now, this is an interesting way. I mean, because this is the, you know, Elijah was the announcer of a new God. John the Baptist is the announcer of a new God. Young is the, the last fish in the first water bearer, you know? He doesn't know this yet, but now, so the child who will announce the father, the fruit that is older than the tree on which it grows. So anyway, the father or the one who is to come is the father of the sprout. This is, this is his child, you know? So that's, that's kind of a mystery, a little bit of a mystery. It's always been, you know, somehow the, the God is always thought of as a child. And, you know, I don't know. This is from Meister Eckhart. You know, he, he goes into his house and there's a boy there. He's the sprout. And Eckhart talks to him and he says, where do you come from? And he says, I come from God. Where are you going? To God. Where will you find him? I will find him where I, when I leave all created things. Well, this means to go into the depths, you know? Who are you? A king. Where is your kingdom? In my heart. But no one shares it with you, so I share it with them. Eckhart takes the boy to his room. Take any clothing you like, he says. Take any clothing that you like, he says. Then I would not be a king, the boy replies and vanishes. Now, yet Eckhart is talking about his sprout, you know, his own inner, inner child. Or, you know, it's kind of, it is the philosopher's stone, I really think, that's talking out loud within him. This third thing, which is going to be personality number two or whatever, that we learn in alchemy. It's, it's the, it's the, our temple of wisdom where ego becomes the empty vessel that's going to be filled with the images from the other world. And now this, this empty vessel filled with soul is, is the philosopher's stone. But anyway, now here's some other interesting comments about this. In pain where you can see, well, that was his, you know, having to renounce all the prestige that he gained in psychology, psychological circles, you know? And lust glowed about your birth. And hi, Adam, we're just getting started. So nice to see you. Lust groaned about your birth. The air shook with the anthem of blaspheming souls when the God plunged you in my heart. So anyway, he's just talking about the, the doubt that a thinking function person would have when they're confronting all this stuff, you know? And, but okay, here's, he describes, fear is your herald. Fear is what announced you or, or brought you forth. Doubt stands to your right and disappointment to your left. So the, the fathers of this new God, which is awakening within you is fear, doubt and disappointment. Okay? And he'll talk about this more, and this is really instructive to all of us, I think. We shrank together in our ridiculousness of senselessness when we caught sight of you. Most strange miraculous child. You see, these are the inner visions. You know, there were just this idea of the, the absurd in the, them and, and, you know, are they, are they, is he going, is he having hallucinations? Or is he communicating with the depths while he is awake? You know, in an active imagination. Our eyes were blinded and our knowledge fell silent when we received your radiance. Now, this is a very interesting comment on the, on the role of the ego when we're doing active imagination, you know? Our eyes were blinded and our knowledge fell silent when we received your radiance. That which is beyond words, you know, this, this is the wisdom of the depths. Doesn't need English grammar. Your, your, you knew, hi Kathy, we're just getting started. You haven't missed too much. You knew spark of an eternal fire into which, in, you knew spark of an eternal fire into which night and what kind of mud were you born? Well, he's talking about himself. He's the night, he's the mud in which she was born. Yeah, this was born. And here he's talking about the fires of madness are blazing towards you as sacrificial fires. You know, I mean, he's just has this sense of, of this is, he's now in another realm. This is not the realm. And, and then here's, he's going to describe the two realms that are, are at work here. Ice cold hands of steel murderously grasp after you. But they will melt helplessly from their glow. They can't, this can't be grasped. They will mix the venom of treacherous thoughts into your food. And they themselves will pine away because of it. You know, the treacherous thoughts are venom. And yet they, even though they demean this thing, when it's not there, it's, there's a great grieving and I, I've experienced that myself. When you lose the connection and it's all gone, it's, it is, it's, it's, you know, you'll grieve from it. Lustful and heavenly beauty will approach your camp. One would like to slobber over you in heat. I mean, this is the one that is just, you know, aesthetically overwhelmed. And the other would like to trample you arrogantly. And that's the thinking function. So he's, I think he's, they somehow refer to the functions too. But they will powers, powerlessly worship you and lay their hands under your feet. I mean, this is the true meaning, you know, this is what meaning is. I mean, I had somebody ask me, tell me the other day that they wanted to have a meaningful conversation with me, you know, and I said, I mean, I just, I'm just at a point, you know, now where can you really talk about these things we're doing with someone else, you know, who's not introduced to him? I mean, and do they want, and, and he wanted more, what he meant by meaning is to sit and talk philosophy. And I don't want to do that. I really don't. I mean, it's just, it's almost sacrilege, you know? And so I didn't know what to say to him. Okay. Anyway, you will ring truthful prayers from your believers. And they must involve, invoke your glory in tongues that are atrocious to them. You will fall on them in their hour of their disgrace and humiliation. And will become known to them in what they hate, fear and abhor. Okay. Well, how do we get in touch with the depths? We get in touch with the depths through experiencing the hour of ego's disgrace and humiliation. And through egos, what it fears and abhors, you know, I mean, in other words, this is, this is, when ego is empty finally and, and lost everything and hit bottom, now suddenly the depths can speak before they were, they had no access to ego because it was, it was too powerful. Your face, oh child, will be found in the hideous features of mighty beasts in the remotest grounds, ground of our souls, you know? And this is, that's what I just, you know, I just, it's just a kind of a revelation, you know, that all of these thoughts and things are coming from this, you know? This face. You know, that's, that's who's speaking on that here. It's not human. You know, it's what's speaking to us is life itself and there's nothing human about it. That same voice in us is the same, is in this face as well, you know? It speaks its language through images, you know, and, and based on its instinctual existence, but it's the same voice. Except now, you know, it's dealing with a creature called Homo Mythos. Just damn it.
Oh, seems totally appropriate, doesn't it?
It does. Amy, would you do something? Okay. All right. Sorry.
Oh, you're on mute. You muted yourself, correct?
Yeah, this little puppy wants to come in the room and the other dog objects. Okay. Well, anyway, it is appropriate. Okay. So your voice, Amy, please come with it. Your voice, the rarest pleasing sound will be heard amid the horrible stammerings of wretches, rejects and those condemned as worthless. Now, this, this is your voice, the rarest pleasing sound. So, I mean, you know, these voices that speak to us are the rarest pleasing sound, but they're not going to come through to, to our persona. They're going to come through after you've gotten rid of everything like Inanna does and came to the depths through the seventh gate into the underworld with nothing. And then maybe the depths can have a conversation with us, you know? Your realm will be touched by the hands of those who also worshiped before the most profound lowliness and whose longing drove them through the tide of evil. Now, it is again, he's talking sort of biblically here, but this is intensely personal. He's talking about himself, what opened up this world for him? And it was all this pain that he suffered up till in these last weeks. And, and this sprout, this child gives its gifts to those who pray to you in terror endowed. Young, he's talking about young. And your light will shine upon those whose knees must be bent before you unwillingly and are filled with resentment. Again, that's young right now. Your life is he, your life is with he who has overcome himself and who has disowned his self overcoming. So, I mean, this is, this is a person who is, I, again, I think it is, you know, he has this statement in the red book. You can't be fully human. And what he means by fully human is not what we mean by fully human until you've touched bottom. And this is what you often discover in addiction recovery or something that you can't really begin your your recovery until everything you had has been taken away from you. And you suddenly are, know that this is a life or death matter. If this is it, I, I either decide for life or I'm going to be snuffed out. You know, one of the two. So, I mean, that kind of crystallizes the decision for a person who's going to kick a very powerful addiction. And he says, I, and then this is again, talking about the only way you can come to this is through great weakness, not through great strength. I know that the salvation of mercy is given only to those who believe in the highest. And then faiths faithfully betray themselves for 30 pieces of silver. Well, that's, Judas is an ideal candidate for the depths, you know? But he's got, he has to betray his highest value first. After he's betrayed his highest value, now the depths are saying, you're okay. You've experienced your initiation. Now you, now we can talk to you. Betray what you most love and then we can talk with you. You know, Peter denies Christ three times, you know? Those who will dirty their pure hands and cheat their best knowledge against error and take their virtues from a murderer's grave are the only ones invited to your great banquet. Again, this is the, the way to the depths is through, and this, I think our dreams always say this, and so do fairy tales. The dreams say, you're, you're in a, in a town, you can't find your car. It's nowhere to be found. You don't know where you are. You don't know what street you're on, you know? What does that tell us? The ego can't help you now. So what are you going to do? King's two sons tried to lift the chasm and they don't have it, they can't do it. The representatives of ego will never lift the curse on the land. The only one that can lift the curse on the land is the one who is totally foreign to ego and who relies on animal helpers. And that's the fool, you know? So, and, and then he says, the constellation of your birth is an ill and changing star. Again, that's kind of, you know, a sort of an allusion to his, his fascination with Heraclitus, you know, where he thinks God is an ever changing being, you know, that always, you know, and, you know, if you talk about anybody's meaning, like our meaning, if our meaning comes from this work, it's an ever changing star, you know? Because everything we do changes us and the depths respond to what we do. And so it's growing and going somewhere. It's not a fixed point, like there's no absolute truth. It's evolving. You know, life is a becoming thing, you know? We don't want to, I mean, if you want to go into the world of non-being where things don't change, then nothing ever happens, you know? So anyway, and then he says, he ends this thing, these, oh child of what is to come. These, oh child, the child, this, the child are the visions that he's experienced. The one is to, who is to come is the parent of the child are the wonders that will bear testimony that you, and this is Young saying about what he's experienced over the last 12 weeks are a veritable God. And then he, again, I read this already, but he says, my soul, you wanted me to write down and utter all these words. I did not know that you guarded such secrets. I am astonished and you are an unbelievable riddle. Well, that's quite an initiation into the, into the depths, I think. You know, that's the first dialogue. Does anybody have any comments of their strength, hope and experience they want to share? Or we can just go on to the next one. Hi, Charles. Okay. Well, feel free to speak up anytime, you know, if you have any questions or comments. Okay. Well then, now we're going to go to the next one. This is the second episode of Elijah and Salome of three. I think they show up again at the very end. And then of course, when, when the woman at the scholar's house says, I bring you greetings from Salome. You know, so I mean, I think they come up two more times after this. And Young was really amazed after the, you know, after being gone for six to seven years, he suddenly sees Elijah and Salome again. And he said, they hadn't changed all, you know, nothing happened. So he's, he's kind of thinking that these figures in the depths, he had, he had to catch them up on what he's done since he last saw them. So, so they really don't know what's going on. So anyway, now this is, so we, we did the first one last time. And this is the second episode. And so this is on 1222. And he is asking, you know, you guys, you know, these marginal comments sometimes are more instructed to me than the, than the, than some of these fabulous mystery plays, you know, what he says at the beginning and what he says at the end, because they're in, in the black books, unedited, real time. And they kind of, so he's speaking to, only to himself, not writing for anybody. So he's sort of speaking about what, what he's been experiencing and trying to get it down in a confessional type format, you know? So, and so he sits down at his writing desk and his first words are, what am I going to write? Everything is dark in front of me. There's no shape. There's no bright, there's no dark. It's just the gate to darkness. Now, who enters here must grope for what is closest to him, you know, in the utter darkness. This you can, if you can probably feel this when you're in a dark room, you grope for what is closest. He must feel his way from stone to stone. No clear thought comes towards him. He has to sample them all, even though they're not clear thoughts. They're random images, you know, that don't seem to make any sense. The, and, and why is this? Well, it's because the valuable and the worthless must be embraced with the same kind of love. Because we don't know what's valuable here. Maybe in the ego, we have a sense of that, but not here. Because in this world of darkness, our values are suspended. A mountain can be the smallest nothing, doesn't mean anything. And a sand grain could contain universes where it may not. Every valued judgment must fall off from me, every, equally every logical judgment. Even my taste must be shed before this gate, the gate to the darkness. You get rid of all your knowledge and above all, sacrifice your arrogance. Even when it seems to be based on merits. And this is going in there with no presumptions. Because this is the world of that bare face, you know? Not the one that ego has built up with its, you know, flimsy constructs, you know? Who enters here enters as a poor or stupid person. Because what we call knowledge here is ignorance. Seeing here is blindness. Hearing here is deafness. Feeling here is dullness, you know? He enters through the gate entirely poor, pathetic, humble and ignorant. This is the only way you can communicate with these, this depths. Even in your poverty, ignorance and humility, you can't be greedy or presumptuous and, and you, about what's going to come through the darkness. You should expect neither bread nor stones, but you should just look on without desire or passion. You know, I mean, just what's going to come, you know, it just is going to pop up. It kind of reminds me of, you know, that the creator God Brahman in Hindu pantheon. He's the creator God. And what happens is something comes into his head and boom, it's there, it's an elephant. Another thing comes into his head, boom, there, it's a tiger. But he's just as astonished. But he's just as astonished and stupefied as all the people in the audience. I mean, he's the conduit of the creator, creation, but he's not the creation. The creation is far beyond Brahman, you know. So, um, he's just this, uh, this portal through which it comes through, you know, um, and you should turn all your anger against yourself. Because only you can hinder yourself from seeing. And this mystery play or these images are as delicate as air and as thin as smoke. But you or us, we're brutal matter that itself is already disturbingly heavy. And it's, it's an obstacle, you know, it's, uh, not, um, helpful, our awareness. You let all hope, which is your greatest good and highest ability, you let, you let, you let your hope, which is your greatest good and your highest ability, hope is our greatest good and our highest ability. Precede and serve you as your leader. You know, in other words, um, I think it, it really is, um, you know, uh, Young, I mean, Edinger says that a prayer is a request from the depths to send us an image with which we can have dialogue. And I think that describes what he's talking about here as hope, you know. Hope is the greatest good here. It is our highest ability here. And it precedes and serves us as our leader in the world of the dark. This is this, um, prayerful expectation. Because, uh, you know, that we are in need of an, of an image. We need an image. Because, um, this hope is of similar substance to the creations of this world. Now, isn't that interesting? That the, uh, hope, which is our greatest good and our highest ability, and you can define hope any way you want. Is, uh, of similar substance to the creations of the depths, you know, that's, and I don't know what that means, but it's, it, uh, it's, it's resonates. Let your hopes swell towards it into the indeterminable. So let, let your hope out and let it fill, fill the space in front of you, you know. Now, I, I think you need to, I, I think he's being a little more subtle than, than, um, hope is not greed, you know, it's a different kind of thing. And I'm not exactly sure how to define it. Okay, so, um, he, he says, I, and then he, then he suddenly is experiencing, he's going into, uh, uh, seeing images right now. So I, I guess I'm already on this, this waste spot in the rocky depth that seems to me like this giant crater. It's a volcanic crater, volcanic crater. So, I mean, it speaks that the depths lie below it in great heated volumes. And, uh, can come up at any time. In the distance, and that's kind of describes our unconscious. It's, it's like a volcanic, volcanic crater. And no one knows when it's going to, um, you know, emit its, uh, inner substance. In the distance, I see nestled in the hillside, the white house with the columns. Everything is bleak, foggy and nightlight. Okay. That's kind of what I see when I have images, they're very bleak and dark and foggy and nightlight. I see from afar Salomea in a white dress, walking along. She's the son of Elijah, the prophet, or daughter, so she wears white. Walking along the length of the wall toward the left, touching the wall like a blind person. The black serpent behind her. Now, the serpent represents the primitive, unassimilated, undifferentiated psyche. You know, so this is the psyche before it's, uh, assimilated, you know, and differentiated. And it's kind of represented by dragons. In, uh, I think Sarah's dream, it was a pig, you know. If, you know, it, it's this, um, undifferentiated psyche. And it's, the snake is so uncanny and nocturnal. It's a wonderful image, especially a black snake. So, um, anyway, um, they, uh, the old man stands under the portal and he waves to me from the distance, so he beckons us. You know, this is the, uh, he beckons us, so, uh, but hesitantly I draw closer. He calls Salome back, she approaches him, uh, and leans against him. She, she is like someone suffering. I cannot detect any sacrilege in her. Her hands are white and her face has a gentle expression. You know, and Young mentioned this in the last time is the, uh, that her badness came from, from, uh, the fact that, um, uh, Young's thinking function had, uh, had suppressed, the eros, or the logos had suppressed eros and it was subjugating eros. And that's why she was blind and also why she had been, she had been subjugated so long that she, it kills the announcer of the new god, John the Baptist. You know, and that wasn't her fault. Because you can see no sacrilege in her nature. The serpent, uh, lies before them. I stand before them clumsily and uncertain like a stupid boy, you know. Young was six foot three, by the way, he's a pretty big guy. Here I am again, I would like to say. And, and the words get stuck in my throat, you know, cause everything is uncertain and ambiguous, so he doesn't say anything. The old man eyes me searchingly. What do you want here? He says in a sharp tone. And, uh, Young says, finally gets his voice and says, forgive me. It's not my obtrusiveness or arrogance that leads me here. I am here perchance not knowing what I want. But I admit that a longing has brought me back. A longing that stayed behind in your house yesterday. And, uh, I, uh, remember this, uh, image of, uh, or, or something that Gerhard Dorn says. You know, that, um, longing creates, or Jacob Burma, I guess, said, the basis of the world is, is non-being. It's, it's a vacuum. Because the beginning of the world is desire, longing, and only an absolute vac- vacuum can have longing. A vacuum, non-being can by longing draw or attract into itself. Something exceedingly positive, because it creates the world. Longing creates the world. Now, you kind of think about that one, it's not exactly obvious, but I, doesn't it resonate a little bit? That through longing, I, you know, through this sense of, uh, well, I always ask my wife, you know, I mean, when she complains about, um, it's this sort of love hate relationship with, um, with men's desires, let's say. You know, and on the one hand, she's, you know, has a lot of, uh, well, you know. Anyway, I said, what would happen if food had no flavor or taste? You know, would you have the same relationship with food? No, and, and some, so sometimes you long, there's a vacuum within you for these tastes, you know, and, uh, and you can fulfill them, you know. So that's just an analogy to something else, but it's, um, it's sort of an, a little bit of analogy. So, um, anyway, longing has brought me here. And I see, um, when he says that, um, but I admit that longing has brought me back, a longing that stayed behind in your house yesterday. And then he sees Salome raises her face at that, cause she knows he's talking about her. And she smiles, uh, to, to Elijah and it, she looks like she's, uh, there's quiet happiness. He loves me, you know. Now, now this is gonna be, come really important, this love between Salome and Young. Because it's really the love between, um, our life, our, our awareness and life itself, okay? That's the relationship here. Our awareness and life itself. You know, I mean, uh, the fact that we take for granted this, um, fact that we're alive, you know. And, and we're not only alive, but we produce people like Mozart and Michelangelo and Luciano Pavarotti and Rudolf Nureyev and Leo Tolstoy and, uh, you know, uh, Picasso and Bertold Brecht, all these great expressions. So what, who is this we are, you know? And what is this longing that we experience? You know, uh, and, and, but his longing brings him back and Salome represents sort of this spirit that fed all those great people, you know. I once knew this astronomer, uh, she was a, a woman about my age. She was teaching astronomy at the University of Pennsylvania, I think. And I said, well, how's it going? And she says, well, I teach beginning astronomy and whenever I tell everybody that the sun is, is sometimes going to become a red giant and it's going to envelop the earth and incinerate it, they all get really sad. And she said, that'll happen about six billion years. And and anyway, when you think about it, what's going to happen to Mozart? You know, what's going to happen to, uh, to Picasso and Shakespeare and all of these wonderful creations, you know? It's just an interesting thought, you know. Anyway, um, uh, but she's, she's quietly happy. And he, he's not really sure who she is, Salome, but it is Salome. And he says, he says, you see prophet, I am tired, my head is heavy as lead. I'm lost in my ignorance, I toyed with myself long enough. And he's talking about, I need somebody to help me, I'm desperate here. I've played my hypocritical games with myself and, uh, they've all disgusted me. And finally, uh, there's something with, that truth is sprouting from the earth here. You know, why am I here? What is my ontological purpose? Cause I'm sick of all this other stuff, which is not real. It, 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 he says, all, all I had was, I, what I, it was clever of me to perform what others expected from me in the world of men, but, um, it seems as if I am more real here. Now, that's pretty interesting. I'm more real here, you know. I mean, cause this, when you, when you're, uh, if you do have a, and by the way, um, Gary's going to do a, uh, I, uh, an, an exercise at eleven, which I, you know, we're, um, I think it might hopefully give us some inklings of that, you know, um, he's, uh, well, uh, but I'll, so I'm gonna try to cut out a little earlier so we can have some discussion. Let's see, uh, the, um, so wordlessly Elijah, no, he says, uh, it seems to me if I'm more real here. And yet I do not like being, really like being here. And I even believe that this world resists me, it doesn't like me either, you know. I don't like being here, it doesn't seem to like me, you know. But I feel more real here, you know. And then wordlessly Elijah and Salome step inside the house and he follows them reluctantly. This feeling of guilt torments me, it's a bad conscience. I would like to turn back. But I have to keep going, he knows it. The hall is bleak and there is the shining crystal. And he, uh, you know, we saw the shining crystal last time and I think there he saw Adam and Eve. And I forget what else he saw. Oh, and, and then he saw the, the red sail with the blue black sea. And there was one other thing he saw. But anyway, he walks up to it in its play of fire. And in the fiery corona, he sees the mother of God, as if in an old painting. Peter stands to her left bearing keys. So it's, it's, it's Mary, the mother of God, with Peter, the, the rock of the, of the church, you know. On this rock, I will build my church. And, uh, just thought I'd show you, this is a a painting of, uh, you can see what, what does Peter have there? It's the keys with the Madonna. So that's what he's seeing. And it's just, uh, a rather interesting that, uh, the first time that, um, Young sees, uh, Philammon. What does Philammon have in his hand? The keys, you know. I don't know if you can see him there, but there they are. Anyway, um, that was his first vision. And then he saw the pope with a, a triple crown in a, um, in a festival audience. And, uh, there it is, uh. That's actually is a real crown. You know, and there's the pope and his, his triple crown. Now that's supposed to mean, um, just a second. Okay. That means the, uh, the ruler of kings and princes or the father of kings and princes, the ruler of the world and the vicar of Christ. Those are the, what the three crowns mean. So those are the three crowns of, of the father of the church. The one, he's not, he's not a man. He's, he is a, um, he's like, um, he's like the Dalai Lama, you know. He is, um, was, uh, has a role similar to the Dalai Lama, one who's chosen. Hi, Tim. We're just, uh, into this, this, uh, vision of Elijah and Salome here. So, and then he sees a sitting Buddha in a circle of fire. Now, this was interesting just because he mentions this in the, uh, the, uh, that essay that we saw there the other day. And he's talking about the difference between the Buddha in the circle of fire and the Christ, you know. And he says, uh, passion whose conquest still requires so much effort in the case of Christ and does so incessantly and in ever greater measure. Now, that, that sort of is, sort of describes the, uh, the passion and the suffering. There's this, a passion and a suffering in Christianity, uh, that, um, is a great mystery. And, uh, but that, um, has left the Buddha. The Buddha is beyond passion, beyond suffering. But it's still there and it surrounds him as a blazing fire. And he's both unaffected and untouchable, you know. So that was the next vision. Yeah, go ahead.
Well, it reminds me of, I think Young said something like, um, with Christ, being Christ was something that sort of just happened to, um, and Buddha, uh, it was a good choice.
Yeah, uh, the Jesus was born and he had a destiny and a fate which was preordained, you know, there's just this, this aspect of that he, he was here. It's a very interesting image of the one who is to, um, now, now it, it, it actually has a much simpler meaning than the one who atones for, uh, the sin of Adam, okay? What was the sin of Adam, you know? You know, this, in fact, it happens on Golgatha, which is the hill of the skull, which means that's where Adam's skull is buried. Adam's skull is buried in at the root base of Golgatha. On a tree, this is the tree now of not of knowledge but of life. The sacrificed one is hung from it and his blood comes down and annoys the skull of Adam and then atones all those who came after him. So that's sort of the very, very deep, um, undecipherable uh, message of of the of this uh, predestined sacrifice, you know? But um, on the other hand, where the Adam's sin was really to leave non-being. You know, when we leave non-being and become a this Archimedean point, this third point that's left uh, 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 is now looking down at itself, who have we offended? We've offended nature. We've offended the great mother because we have left nature. We're no longer a part of nature anymore. And this is what makes us sick, okay? Is that we are separated from our our bodies and our and and it and and the whole process of what we're trying to do here is to reunite in the, you know, in the mysterium conjuncionis, you know, for ego to uh, uh, return to the source and to be its own redeemer. You know, that's the alchymic chemical thing is that we need to bring these images up from the depths like Young is doing, have a communication with them and uh, become its empty vessel and create the the philosopher's stone, which is this divine child. So anyway, yeah, that's true. And I don't really understand uh, the passion and the suffering. Uh, I I'm sure we could go through it, but I don't think it's helpful because um, it's, uh, maybe we can do that someday, but I don't think it's it's helpful right here, you know, at this point, you know? But anyway, and let's keep moving because I want to stop here in just a few minutes. So I maybe I'll just uh, fi- finish. And then the the other things he sees are, um, now, these are very interesting images. Then he sees, um, now, now he sees these one after another and you can just gloss over them, but uh, you know, they're pretty interesting. I mean, he sees uh, Kali. This is the, this is the the mother who devours back. You know, she's the, she's the mother who devours back her young. She's, she's really is called the goddess of transformation, you know? So she's and you know, she's, she's venerated and worshipped, you know? That's a very interesting thing, you know, I think, uh, and I, you know, that's another thing that would be hard to wrap our heads around. Then she sees also Salome desperately wringing her hands. Then he sees the white shape of a girl with black hair, his own soul. And then he sees the white shape of a man, uh, which appeared to be look like like uh, Michelangelo's Moses, you know? So there's Michelangelo's Moses famed for his uh, horns on his head, you know? You notice in the background, there's the green man. Do you see that? The green man. Anyway, um, so then then Elijah and Salome, Salome, the real one, stand before him softly smiling. Now, uh, what's going to happen in the rest of it? And we'll finish it next time, but it's basically that um, uh, Young uh, is resisting these images that he is having and um, and because he identifies with his own thoughts, okay? You know, who are, who am I? I am my own thoughts. Well, should I let these thoughts in my head, you know, because they're horrible? You know, I mean, and that's why he's feeling so anxious, you know? And uh, uh, he's, he says, you know, he has this description of them, uh, of their um, their nature, uh, he just doesn't know exactly what they are and what his relationship with them is. And so he's reading very evasive about it. And uh, um, this is where, and we'll go into it because it's, I'm not really gonna do a very good job of describing it here. But it's um, where Elijah tells him that uh, when you see a deer or animal coming in the forest, you you think um, that that is that you brought them into the forest? I mean, and what Young says about this now, I don't know if I can determine this, but but that um, the this is the like Brahman, the creator god, when you know, they just, these these elephants just appear for him. He supposedly is the there when it happened, but um, he's not really the source of it because he's astonished as everybody else, you know, is, but he's sort of the conduit of it. So what what Elijah is telling him, no, you don't have to say that you created these images. Um, that they are here, they they're just like a deer or animal walking in the forest. And now, now we'll go over this a little bit more because I'm I'm still, I've got a conception of what it means, but I'm not communicating it very well. Uh, but what it it Young says about it later is that this was what taught him psychic objectivity. In other words, that what we're experiencing in the inner world is not us, it's the other. And why is it the other? Because if it's not the other, then we can't have a relationship with it. It needs to be something other than that. So that taught him psychic objectivity. So that was why in some of his magical analysis, where some woman said molecules are spinning around and I don't know, but I don't know whether it's Young speaking or someone else speaking, or it's me speaking or someone else speaking there. That's what she described the analytical hour as like. But Young said that um, uh, that that was where he learned to tell uh, the uh, the patient uh, during the analysis when they're talking and say, shh, quiet, something's happening. In other words, let's let it happen, you know? So as they sat there incubating whatever was going to happen, it would appear somehow in their discussion. Well, anyway, um, why don't we, we got about uh, probably thirteen fifteen minutes, thirteen fifteen minutes. Then uh, Gary's going to do an exercise for us. So and and now anybody can talk about anything they want to. And we'll, um, why don't you start, Adam? Because Gary is gonna have the whole last half hour. Uh, you, is there anything um, that happened this week or anything that you'd like to share with? About anything? We don't have much time.
Um, yeah, I think probably nothing that that would be easy to share about.
Yeah, okay. Well, all right. Well, we we need to have a little longer time then. Uh, we'll, we'll try to do that uh, next time. But um, I really think it's a good time to uh, share. I mean, and and we, Adam, Gary and I were talking about how valuable, I mean, what a master you are at what you're doing and uh, you know, and and you're you're, yet on the other hand, you're a mysterious person. And so anything you can, anything you can say to uh, to give us clues about your mystery are helpful. So anyway, how about you, Charles? Oh, go ahead. You want to say?
No, yeah, I was just gonna say, you know, I own my own processes is so um, it's so painful that it's like it's not easy to talk about. So I I identify with what Young is writing here. And you know, it, this is, this is just me and I'm sure it's a projection on my part. But like, it it can be like so amazing to like, watch Young experience these sort of excruciating states and stuff and be like, boy, I wish I could, I wish I could have that because it's so meaningful. But I mean, in my case, I feel like I'm experiencing this stuff and it's so painful and and it ends up being meaningful, but um, I wouldn't wish it on anybody.
Well, and and Gary mentioned that too, though, that that is the pain that a shaman feels. And us- usually if it, the only way that we can heal someone else's wound, the way we awaken the anti-venom to the pain is to experience the pain ourselves. And then we can heal someone else who has a similar pain. So healers, shaman healers, tend to experience a lot of uh, of of unease, you know? Uh, unfortunately. But but the idea is, I I think that any time we experience pain, we have to remember that we are also awakening the healing half of that pain, you know, within us, you know? So anyway, uh, it's something to think about. I mean, it was just something Gary and I uh, thought was one of why you are so good at what you're doing. Because I think this um, uh, this sense of uh, of 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 um, great empathic power, because I, uh, you you know, I'm feeling this, maybe you've never felt it, but I know what I'm talking about, comes through very genuinely, you know? What do you, uh, Charles, how about you? Uh, I I hope we can get to everybody. Anything to report?
I guess recently I've been um, trying to uh, I feel like I've been um, having inflation for a long time and I'm trying to kind of come down and return to earth and um, trying to um, um, I feel like I'm in, like I'm an energy quarter and all of my energy and life force is um, really only spent on myself. And I'm trying to um, just trying to be more like giving. And um, I'm trying to shift, um, trying to shift kind of like where I operate from and um, how I, what I focus on, try not to be so uh, egocentric, basically. Um, it's difficult. I have to, it seems like I have to do it every day. When I wake up, I have to do it all over again and figure it out all over again. And it's just gonna, uh, it's gonna take a while, but um, it it feels, it feels a little bit better, that's for sure.
You know, one thing, Charles, just about your, about you, you know, we were talking about your highest meaning, which has something to do with like, almost with the physical universe, you know? I just want to mention that we're getting a twelve inch reflector telescope. And we're going to uh, you know, Jupiter and Saturn later this month are gonna be closer than they've ever been. So we're gonna see them. But I I just wonder what would happen to your sense of of uh, of isolation and things if you would go to an observatory or someone who had a joined an astronomy club or something and just looked at M fifty-one, the whirlpool galaxy, or looked at Mars or Saturn's rings.
Oh, I love that.
Well, I just think it's, it would awaken an energy within you that is really not going to be annoying to anyone else, you know?
I'm a bit of a heretic.
Well, yeah, but I'm just saying, you know, uh, you, you know, we need the feminine in our life. But I think we also, I mean, the fact that you need, um, you you seem to have a great affinity for the uh, for for the mysteries of the of the cosmos. I think that it would be very, uh, something that would be add value, you know? How about you, Tim? You always have interesting things going on.
Well, yes, I actually had kind of a revelatory experience with uh, this dream that we've been talking about and um, in the other group.
Yeah.
And um, I won't go into the details, but but what I realized was I think the dream was trying to tell me that the uh, the environment that we find ourselves in is like the frozen north. If you have a certain attitude that it's trying to kill you, it very probably will kill you. But if you have an attitude that, well, this is a, this is a world with its own gifts and resources and we just have to learn how to live there, then the chances are that you're, you're gonna be able to uh, not only survive, but to thrive. And the the more you can see a strange world as a world full of resources and new opportunities, the better our chances are. And I feel like that's our moment right now where we're trying to survive in this country that's tearing itself apart. And um, and there seems to be no, no clear uh, warmth or or path forward. And I feel like my challenge is to try to figure out what the natural environment is providing for me. How can I uh, step up to the challenge and be able to use my own creativity to blossom in that, in that space? So that's what's, that's what's on my mind.
But you know, one thing I've I thought about, Tim, uh, in in relation to your dream and and also your visionary experience that you had before, is that the pole star in this vision is either the, is the very stark image of the vast wilderness in one case. In the other case, it's the image of an iceberg with only one eighth showing above the surface and seven eighths underneath. These are the highest symbols on the stained glass windows of your Temple of Wisdom, you know? So what do they mean? I mean, our orienting points are the iceberg and the vast wilderness. In addition to uh, a lot of feminine images that we could add to that, you know? But um, uh, they're just, um, they kind of remind me of Charles's images of the of the cosmos, that when they come close to him, there is a magnetic resonance within them, you know? But I mean, it's, it it also, you know, there is a scene in the Red Book where Young goes and talks to um, to absolute zero, you know? I mean, it's personified as a person. And he he's going to the edge of the universe to where there is nothing. And he sees this lonely character standing there and he says, I know who you are. He says, how do you know that? You who have a heart, you know? You come to me, I don't have a heart, you know? I mean, I I'm at the edge, I mean, he's just this, um, the physical matter out of which life came. And yet life has a relationship with this physical matter because we are the rocks out of which life came. We came out of a rock and now we're a living, talking rock with flesh on ourselves. But um, anyway, the the stark image of the iceberg and the uh, and the vast wilderness to me are wonderful symbols to be at the altar
Yeah.
The divine.
For those of you who who don't know about this, I had this vision last winter. And uh, in part of it, I'm standing on this rock at the ends of the wilderness. It's a, it's a very um, it's a, it's a sedimentary rock that's been pushed up this way and there are all these shards on top of it. And so I'm standing in my bare feet, naked in the snow. And at one point, and I realize, you know, this is kind of dangerous, but but I'm so seized with the moment. At one point I fall off the rock and and I I get myself up, I'm kind of bloodied and and sort of scared by that. But I get back up on the rock and it turns out to have been this wonderful experience, part of which I spent just sitting after after I did this little ritual. to have been this wonderful experience, part of which I spent just sitting after after I did this little ritual. I just spent sitting just being aware of how beautiful the world is. And here I am, naked in the snow after being out for half an hour. And it just felt comfortable and and exhilarating to me. And I think of that now and God, obviously, nobody stand that. But the fact is, you know, it's a it's a certain attitude. And if you have the attitude that that you're in a um a pregnant moment in time, then the uh you can unfold the the wisdom that is available. Whereas for most of my life, I think, in that situation, I would just be cowering and thinking, how am I going to survive this? Can I get back to the warmth? So there is that possibility and I feel like that's one of the moments that we're experiencing now.
It's interesting, too, that you say unfold, because you can you would unfold it in a diorama, maybe. And the the other thing is, what were you doing in the diorama? Remember, you were talking about the rock that was up like this with the shards coming out? Well, you were trying with a piece of styrofoam to uh lift another almost obelisk-like uh uh manier, you know. I that's isn't that what they call those in in Celtic mythology? This stone that stands up like this, it's a manier. I mean, you were almost trying to put a manier in the diorama with the with the styrofoam. But anyway, uh how about um Kevin and Marina, maybe um? I think Ja- Jan laughed, but uh Kevin, uh do you have any things to report?
Yeah, uh um I just felt like I've been really developing my sensing, like even today I bought a camera, like I would, I need a phone, I need a computer, like to do my stuff. But no, I go buy a camera. It's that's how big of a drive the sensing is developing towards in me. And it's also funny, because once developing sensing, the the god image also changes. Like the other day, I was watching, you know, the just, you know, the scenery. And I was thinking, you know, perhaps there is no meaning, it's just is, you know. This 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 statement of it's just is, it's just is, it's it's nothing, it's nothing, it just is, it's always been is. And and I was like, yeah, that's definitely sensing like. I feel like um the god image changes with 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 what axis of conscious awareness we have. And we make often the mistake to create it as a, yeah, only truth. And um yeah, and I don't know, like, I don't know. People try to find guide everywhere, but that for me, for me, it's like God cannot escape. It's just it's God is you, God cannot escape for me. For me, it's like that. And um yeah, so yeah, that's my thoughts.
Well, that's interesting. It's like I'm thinking Charles should go to an observatory and I'm gonna try to see Saturn and Jupiter. I mean, I just some, I just have this urge to see it. So I think your camera too is going to be
Yeah.
A way a way of seeing that
Yeah.
heretofore has not been available to your uh psyche. I mean, just to create a beautiful photographic image.
And not only that, I was looking at the cameras, looking straight at the lenses. And I was looking and I had this image of God, like, not like a numinous experience of God, but I'm just, I had this experience of God, like the very experience and the talk in uh Hinduism and so on, it's like um because ev- everything comes from it. But if you look inside, it's just an empty box. And and so, yeah, that's a sort of a pathway to 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 one image of it, yeah.
Yeah, okay, great. Well, how about uh you, Marina? And then I I Dawn and Carlos and Kathy, normally you can say anything if you want to too. But I normally, I know you guys like to remain quiet, but you certainly are invited. Marina, do you have anything?
Um, well, the only thing that I can report is um that I tried to do some active imagination and I sat there for quite a while in the darkness and um I did see an image. I'm still trying to process the image. The image was a Japanese woodcutter.
Yeah.
Um but, you know, he was reluctant to talk to me or whether my ego got in the way, I don't know. So he's very focused on his work and you've been talking about seeing things. And some of the dialogue that I tried to have was about um clearing a path. So.
So so he's he's one who takes a piece of wood and and makes an artwork on it, is that what you meant?
No, it wasn't that sort of.
Forester.
Yeah, yeah, very um humble. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so he's sort of the tree, the master of trees.
Yes, well, and yeah, but he he says that it's the, you know, how say, how do you choose which tree? So he says the trees decide.
Ooh, that's beautiful. So you did have a little bit of thing and the fact
Yeah, a little bit.
Yeah, and the fact that he's Asian is uh also very interesting, because he represents a foreign land. You know, he's he's this, he's the this master of trees from a foreign land. Well, that was a very interesting, that would keep me going for a week. The tree chooses itself, you know. Well, unless Dawn or Carlos or Kathy have anything to say, I'm gonna turn it over to Gary. So I'm gonna mute myself.
Cool. So I was thinking about uh, you know, what Craig does with active imagination. And my understanding is that his active imagination practice is commonly done at like two in the morning. And the this has a really interesting advantage, because, you know, if you're doing this at two in the morning, then you're in a state which is very close to being asleep with some consciousness. And the to do these active imaginations, it's you don't, you know, the ego has to be there, but it's not the one in control. So the question is, you know, what's in control? So if we think of it as the uh the dream maker, it's um or whatever you want to call it, you know, the question is, how do we get this to be present? And you know, and I and I've I've been practicing active imagination and I find it extremely difficult, you know. This is not something which is easy to do. And and out of the readings today, you know, Jung, you know, the the new world is weak and artificial. And then he said, it's the unsightly, put-together semi-reality, you know, and these are just and then and then another one, you know, you enter through the gate entirely poor, pathetic, humble and ignorant. And, you know, I think of any practices which I have tried, you know, active imagination is by far and away the the most difficult. And um one of the things that uh, you know, that I really like is how um Craig keeps bringing up the uh, you know, the picture of the uh the bear, you know, like this is this is the consciousness, this is the being, you know. I happened to come across one, but I thought, oh, yes, this is it, you know, because what we're what we're really trying to work with is our is our hairy monster, you know. And this one is, you know, it's a dog, but it's like it's and it's a huge dog. This thing stands maybe five, six feet tall. But it's literally, it's got like this super coarse grass growing out of it. And, you know, this thing just struck me like, oh, yes, you know, that's that's it. That's what I'm trying to reach for, you know, or or the bear. And the and it's extremely, it's extremely difficult because it's just not a level of consciousness that, you know, that we tend to to work at. And so what I wanted to do today is offer you know, an active imagination, kind of a meditation that we'll we'll try. And the point of this active imagination is to bring up the unconscious and have it be a little more in control. So this one's, you know, normally in meditation, you do it uh sitting down. But this one, you're actually gonna have to do standing and you're gonna have to take off your shoes. Because part of the process is going to be uh getting in touch with the earth and feeling a rootedness. And and to do and eventually you'll be able to do the sitting or lying down. But to begin with, it's gonna be a whole lot easier if you do it standing. And you can you can all you can all kill your videos through this. You know, and I really liked uh both what Tim and Kevin had to say. I thought, wow, you know, that is that is deep. Let's see, I think it was uh Tim that said an attitude of being in a pregnant moment in time. I just I just love that saying. That was that was great. And then Kevin said, God changes with which axis of consciousness we have. And that, you know, that too struck me as being like, wow, that is that is deep. And, you know, and literally what we are going to try doing, unlike, you know, a lot of meditations, they feel they feel sort of like you're in your higher consciousness. This one is gonna feel extremely rooted in the earth, so it's more of a soulful uh meditation if you want. But the point of this is that if you can get the feeling of the rootedness, of the depth, then when and and this is a practice, I mean, this will take a lot of practice outside of this. But then, you know, if you want to do the active imagination work and you're trying to get in the state where the images arise from something other than your, you know, your your ego consciousness, then I've found this to be a really handy technique. And, you know, and if you try it and you you find like some modifications, then, you know, come back and report. But anyway, let's all go ahead and kill our video. And then uh if you haven't done it yet, take off your shoes. And then stand up. So first take some deep breaths, fully inflating your stomach. And just watch your breath for a short time. We're bringing our awareness to our body. Now, with your eyes closed, I want you to imagine that your body, your legs have become extremely large. You have grown immensely in size. You feel a tremendous weight, a tremendous strength. I want you to imagine standing in the twilight before the entrance to a cave. This cave is a place where the primitive people had their rituals, their art, their practices, their sacred ways of being. Now imagine that with your immense size and immense weight, your feet are growing connected to the ground. You feel yourself putting down roots deep into the earth. Your feet are literally rooted to the earth and your consciousness is moving down into the earth. Everything that you are or will be will come from this rooted place. You are literally a part of the earth. Without lifting your feet, you find yourself moving into the cave. There is just enough light to see by, to see the walls. You descend. The earth is carrying you deeper into the cave. You come to a place where there are drawings on the ceiling and there is a wide, open space. You look at the ceiling and know that the earth may guide you to add your own symbol. While feeling the connection with the earth, we will now be silent for six minutes. You feel yourself coming back to awareness. The roots that you had put deep down into the earth You remember the feeling of non-being and the creativity that you had during the connection to the earth. The cave begins to dissolve and you are back in the room. You open your eyes, you wiggle your hands and feet. And you can turn back on your video. So, any comments?
I like that. Um, I had a dream, well, I have had a dream a while ago where there was a cave I was afraid to go into. And, uh, I have an anima figure that keeps recurring and, uh, she'd been trying to walk towards it and the, she fell into the water. And she was like, and we're both like, there, there are dark, there are spirits in that cave. Like, we were afraid to go into it. I was imagining I went into that cave. And then I imagined like the cave paintings on the wall. And I just had an image of like a stag's antlers and stuff.
Oh, nice.
I guess, so I kinda just naturally had like a stag sort of antler image that I left up there.
Right, right. Yeah, that sounds great. Anyone else?
I, well, I just saw, I don't know why, but I just saw the green man, which is like air flowing out of his beard. And then, then it became, uh, a, a sun figure with rays coming out like this. Then it became a moon figure, you know? And there was an image too, like Carl had, of just, uh, uh, bull's horns, you know? Or, uh, some kind of a reindeer too, that, that, anyway, they were all just images, you know? In the, animating the darkness, you know? Yeah.
When you say the green man, uh, is, do you mean Sir Nuno's? Uh, is anyone familiar with Sir Nuno's?
Uh, what, yeah, Chair Nuno's, uh, you know, well, he, he is a, um, probably a little more differentiated than the green man. The green man is, uh, is sort of more pan-like, a European, Northern European pan. But Chair Nuno's is, uh, you know, is kind of that antler deer god. I mean, he has antlers like an elk.
I had, I saw, had a vision of, um, a man once and I couldn't see his face. But he had antlers coming out of his head. And I don't, I, I don't think I'd seen it before. Maybe I'd seen it somewhere. But I guess, uh, Germanic people used, uh, the shamans used to wear like a mask, a fringed mask. Where, so you couldn't see their, there's a band, actually, I saw it about a year after the vision where they dress up like that. I'll send a picture.
Uh, there, uh, somebody sent me the most fabulous Chair Nuno's dream I ever saw. I was just seeing if I could remember it, but I can't remember it right now. But I just remember, you know, well, the, when they, when the, uh, Romans would come into these, uh, places where the, they were representing, uh, worshiping Chair Nuno's, they would say, they would tell the Romans, "He whom you call Zeus, we call Chair Nuno's." The antler, uh, the stag god, god.
Yeah, I'm gonna share a picture.
Carl, you're muted. You might wanna, Carl, you wanna unmute?
Okay, um, see that screenshot? Did I share it?
Yep.
So like about a year after I had that vision, I saw these people, it's kind of, they're, it's called hailing, healing, which is, well, basically translated to English, it would be healing. But they're like kind of a pro, they do like proto-Germanic, um, stuff, uh, you know? These deciphered runes and whatnot are, you know, and, uh, but yeah, they have songs about, um, like fighting the Romans and stuff, um, things from that, that age, whatnot, the Germanic tribes.
Yeah, the, the idea too, I think, is, is just assimilating the, uh, um, the, uh, undifferentiated psyche, uh, the, as an other, and in this case, it would be in, um, in, uh, what do they call it? Theriomorphic form, you know, animal, uh, and, and animal form, but it's, there is no difference, you know? I mean, this is as great a god as the, uh, as the one, the god of light. You know, in fact, it's actually, I think, is, uh, because of its uncanny character, you know, it's a little more, uh, it's a little more real, you know? I mean, there's a, I don't know, this, it's, this, I always think of when you're talking about that of the, uh, of, uh, this, uh, front of, of Joseph Campbell's. That's 35,000 years old, by the way, you know? And it's sort of a primitive Chair Nuno's. It's one of the few wood, uh, relics that have survived. Anyway, how about, how about Marina, Adam, or Kevin, or Charles? You guys got any?
Got, um, very lightheaded doing this exercise, actually.
Yes.
I felt, you know, so the weight of my legs became so heavy that, that I was conscious that I was, um, a little lightheaded. So I was aware of that in the body. Then, deep in the cave, for me, I saw, and I'm starting to process this, uh, alligator or crocodile, but some, you know, gaping mouth with teeth.
Nice, wow.
Knife, I don't know about knife, but something. And I'm just kind of thinking about that in terms of the cave and the devouring mother, maybe. I don't know. I'm thinking about it.
The, the, you know, the very primitive psyche, uh, that we're account, encountering there is the, is like the dragon in alchemy, I think.
I guess, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't be afraid of it. It's just something we need to acquaint ourselves with. And then it will give up the maiden and the gold to us, you know?
Yeah, yeah. And also the word triumph. So I don't know what, um, again, you know, this is kind of very raw, but some triumph or triumphant, some, something like that.
Something to do with the three or something, you know?
Hmm, okay.
What, what about Tim, Adam, Kevin, or Charles? Yeah, thank you, Marina.
Yeah, I guess, you know, I had, I'd had a dream on Monday, which, uh, after the dream, I had this kind of like vision of, um, Deen Condor. But it was a kind of like a cave painting rendition of it. So that was kind of what appeared for me, so.
Isn't that lovely? I mean, the, the, the alligator and the, uh, the stag and, uh, the green man. And, uh, how about, how about you, Tim? You have any, uh, any impressions?
No, but I thought it was a great exercise, very vivid. And, uh, I felt like I, it went by pretty quickly, so I'd like to do it again on my own.
I felt like I was in a big altar, a cave altar, you know? And it was like, um, what's that tree that is, has the twisted trunk in the Vatican? You know, it kind of felt like that, you know? But I, you know, I just, that kind of a room, you know? What, how about you, uh, either Kevin or, or Charles?
Um, yeah, um, uh, mine was not, uh, so visual. Um, but after, you know, walking into the cave and, uh, reaching the kind of opening, I decided to sit down instead of, uh, stand. And, um, just the six minutes of, uh, silence, um, was really, apparently something that I really needed. Um, it must have been, um, yeah, I must have been really needing that because it gave me a really good chance to kind of, differentiate some opposing forces than me that, you know, I, I have been troubled by. So I kinda, you know, end up kind of beating myself up because I'm not, feel like I'm not doing what I'm supposed to be doing or not doing what I, you know, what I feel I should. And just the quietness kind of gave me a chance to differentiate. Well, you know, I just have one part of me that wants to do this and another part of me that wants to do the opposite. Doesn't mean that, um, I should, uh, shame myself over it. It's just that one is, tends to be stronger than the other. Because, uh, in this exercise also, um, you know, it's me being who I am. Uh, I have a lot of difficulty being, uh, grounded and, uh, having a relationship with the earth. And for me, physical life is very like, uh, uh, it's not, it's not like it's so hard. It's just something that I don't want to do and I don't want to give it my attention. But, you know, this is where, um, the other, you know, other people are. And, um, you know, the part of me that needs relationship is like very much, um, uh, in dire need of, of being on the earth. And so, uh, it was particularly good, uh, exercise for me. Um, so, yeah.
Thank you, Charles. You know, next time, maybe we can end, uh, when they don't have an exercise, we'll end a little early and give everybody a, a time, time to talk a little, a little bit more at length on things. Cause I'd like to hear Adam and Marina too, and, uh, any, and Carl, anything. What about you, uh, Kevin?
Yeah, it was a great exercise. I feel like this is a exercise from Adam and Eve. Um, without going to conceptualize it too much, it's like, um, in Islam, Adam and Eve is like 30 minute, uh, 30 meters high, you know, in hadith. You know, you have the Quran, the holy, the holy Quran, and you have the hadith. And hadith, um, Adam and Eve are 30 meters high. And Jung also talked about Rex and Regina in, I think, Mysterious Konnechones and so on. So there is a statue that has life and this is a big statue. You know, we talk about statue, we don't talk about small thing, we talk about big things. So I felt like your exercise was quite archetypal, uh, archetypal in that way. You know, you're, you're asking us to become huge, huge, you know?
Yeah, that was very interesting when that, I liked it. Go ahead, Kevin, I'm sorry.
But, yeah, I was thinking like, and this is somewhat of my projection as well. When I went into the cave, I just had this, um, feeling of loneliness from the, from the, I felt, I felt like, um, when, when God image approaches this cave, I felt it was a huge loneliness from, from God or from spirit, if you like. And it must be very lonely for, and this is somewhat also a projection because I don't think humans can fully take away themselves from it. Is that when the spirit approaches this cave, how lonely must, you know, how lonely is that feeling? And that's one aspect. And another aspect, it reminds me of a dream I had, an archetypal dream I had. And, um, and it was war and I went into this underground and there was a huge river, like, no, yeah, huge river on both sides. And on the left and right, it was full of dead people. And on the front, there was a huge tree. And it was so huge tree. And I walked down this steep path towards this huge tree. And I climbed up and I sat on it. And I don't know, the feeling of the tree of life is like the feeling of eternal. And I always ask myself, when can I have this feeling again? You know, it's, it's a feeling of eternal, it's an eternal peace. Nothing can touch you. It's just full, full on bliss. And, and this feeling, we all, we often think of it as something that has to happen in dreams or certain mystical experience. But I realize the feeling of life itself is always there. It's, it's never away, like, it's always there. If we take, it's just there. If we just sit and feel our blood pumping, you know? The, the, you know, like I said, I'm like in the sensing state now. So that's why I also sharing this, like, yeah, the, but the blood pumping is on the life that is carrying us. Yeah, I felt like, I felt the tree of, uh, tree of life again. And I felt like it's never was far away. Then, my last insight was, I realized the tree of life was never my own. It's just, it never, it was never my own. Like, I like to think it's my own, but it never was. Because everyone experienced the same eternal bliss. So it's just fluctuating around, basically. And, um, yeah, it's crazy to think about it.
Yeah, well, Dawn just said, um, "I was interrupted and I usually need longer to get into the state." Uh, she's speaking of a mask I once saw doing exercise. So she saw a mask and is that such as the face of a clown? And over his clown makeup, there was another mask which covered half of its face so that it could not see out of one eye. And it's very interesting. And its entire mouth was covered so that it couldn't speak. So it was this mute, uh, one-eyed, uh, kind of a jester type of a being, which is very elemental. And, um, Carlos or Kathy, do you have anything to add? Um, always very welcome to add, but you don't have to. It's just, uh, we, we can be observers too. But if not, uh, next time, uh, well, whenever Gary or Adam don't have an exercise, I'll end a little early and then we'll give everybody a chance to kind of, um, you, you know, just give us a little bit of orientation and we can ask a few questions because I think we're all seeking things here. And, uh, um, you know, like, we're all feeling a little disoriented. And let's try to, um, try to at least share our disoriented aspects that we have. So anyway, well, well, thank you, everybody. Uh, I kind of went on a little long, so I didn't get through it. But, uh, we'll, uh, see you next time. We do have the two dream sessions at 7:00 PM Chicago. It's, uh, Monday and Wednesday, so you're all welcome to those too. Okay. Well, thank you, everybody. And most, uh, I, I appreciate everybody's, uh, Tim and Adam and Kevin and Carl, Marina, Dawn, Carlos, Kathy, Charles, and Gary. Thank you so much. We'll see you next time.
Great, everyone.
Okay, bye-bye.